I call the August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four Crest Hill City Council meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Roll call please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
Jennifer Methvin.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapiti. Nate Albert. Joe Kubal.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, for the record, I did receive a text from Alderman Albert. He's unable to be here this evening. He is excused. You have before you the minutes of the work session held on July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderwoman Methvin, for the approval of the July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four work session minutes. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Scott Dyke.
I'm staying.
Jennifer Methvin.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on August fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Methvin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on August fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments?
I don't know if this was the one I had the question on, where we had the the contract that we were trying to find my notes. I just want to make sure that the file, the retention was still on there, and the notes it didn't say there. Four schools. Oh yeah, the resolution. Economic Development Department. Waiver of the permit fees, but I just want to make sure that the money we were going to hold was still there because it didn't say it in here.
If you made a correction at the last meeting, it'll be on the next one.
Okay. All right.
Roll call please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti. I'm sorry, he's not here. Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And you have before you the minutes of the work session held on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any agenda items. I would be happy to address any questions, or try to.
Any questions of city attorney? All right, thank you. City Administrator, Tony Graff. Good evening, Tony.
Good evening. The first one is the city center facility. We had our fire inspection the other day, and we passed with a hundred and seventeen of our devices. The hundred and eighteenth device was in the air duct. Basically, it was a relay, relay switch that didn't click at the time. So they'll be coming back when they do our elevator. They'll test it again to see if it works this time. They did retest, but they want to wait and test when it's been a few days again. So we'll be able to do that. We did get our temporary certificate from the State Farm Fire Marshal. They will be back again for the elevator testing, and hopefully then we'll have our certificates that we wanted for this building. The basement water leak, the contractor came in, went to dry. They completed both leaks, the one in the basement side of the city, city offices, and then the one over by the, the police side, which was a very minor crack in the concrete. But that's how they start. So they cleaned it all out and put in the, the new polyurethane type of waterproofing, and they gave us a lifetime warranty. The bid stayed the same, seven thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. The other bid we did have from the concrete company was around ninety-seven hundred dollars, I believe. And then the third company elected not to bid, or give us a proposal, I wouldn't say bid.
Tony, my understanding, when we requested the bids, they supposed to come back to the council, we supposed to make a decision here on this table. And we did the work without any communication.
I communicated with emails back and forth, and at the last work session, you, you guys were aware, they were looking, looking to do the waterproofing with this company.
With this company, but if you-
The longer we waited, the more chance of more damage being done.
If you look at the minutes from the prior meeting, we, the majority of us did request a second call, minimum a second call, and we didn't, never, never got the answer for that.
Which technical part? We talk about, the epoxy, I gave you an answer, just didn't want to use the epoxy.
Correct, you gave the, the answer about the epoxy because there was another question that I had. But the majority of the council here requested a second call for another company to come and give us an estimate.
And we had that from the concrete company, which was around in the nine thousand dollar.
But they said that's not their work, remember?
Correct.
Right, so we, then we requested-
Well, I, I moved forward with, with the proposal as presented, under the need to be emergency, which I was told by the council numerous times, how long we're going to wait for this to get done. They were able to squeeze us in, and it's under Mike Ulitz's purchasing power, and I moved forward with it.
I understand it's an emergency, but if it was an emergency, we've been in this situation for a whole year. And so I make sure next time when we request something, that it gets done. It's not about making drama, it's not about being picky here, but even the resident, they would like for us to get more than one call. That's how we should-
Well, then we need to address our policy next then. Because our policy allows, under twenty thousand dollars, our policy allows us to move forward, so we, and that's what we, we followed, so. The Grand Prairie Water, any more questions? Grand Prairie Water Commission, the next commission meeting is September fifth, Stateville. We're, we're working on the revenue impact. We believe we'll have some, definitely we'll have some numbers for you for the next meeting, and tell you what that impact will be when they close their maximum facility and relocating those inmates offsite instead of onsite. Lockport, the Lockport Township Fire District Training Facility proposal. The design review has been with our site, a site review with our Community Development and Building Division. It'll be coming to the work session on nine-nine for you to review the concepts of the plan for the new, new facility. Route sixty-six anniversary tourism grant, we did get the grant application in with the narrative and timeline and a budget. We're going to be, they're going to allow us to revise the narrative because they only got three hundred thousand dollars total for the whole region, and they received other applications. So they asked us to take another look to see what would be Phase One. Right now, our Phase One had design and looking at the playground. Ron and I met again today, see what budget we could come up with that might get us somewhere in that range of about thirty to fifty thousand dollars, maybe up to a hundred thousand, to stay competitive with the other grantees. We'll be bringing that back to the council at a work session. Because I think the next step is, this is a three-year grant, they would like to see a vision plan for the entire property out here, which Ron has that planned done on, from the engineer's design on utilities. But we've got to look at the bigger picture too, with the van shell and everything else. And that type of design services is going to cost us about eighty thousand dollars. So we'll bring you more information of what the next step would be to get prepared for grant, grant, grant number two for the tourism. Job announcements, the job posting for the Public Works, I emailed, got a copy of it today, I emailed it to you about five o'clock, I got it about four-thirty. So the job posting is up for the Public Works Director. Tonight, we have the Finance Director proposal to get that out, and the Community Development Director will schedule for the next work session to talk about what our next step is for recruiting for the Community Development Director. The Old City Hall, we are still working with QuickTrip, letting them know when we're going on the premises. There is some equipment at the Public Works still had in there, and our Police Department, I think, got all their clothing out and other equipment. But QuickTrip is allowing us to go in and out of the building as long as we keep them notified. We don't have, we don't, we don't have the next date for the mosquito spraying. As soon as I get it, we'll get on Facebook and I'll email it to you. The water replacement meter project, we are gaining some ground. The clerks in the City Hall office, as once we set some schedules up with working with the Public Works crew, we're getting, well, this last couple of weeks, we probably have had about ten appointments that have been able to be kept. And it seems to be working, having them also work on a Saturday. And at least get two or three done on a Saturday morning, that's when people are, are home. And the goal is over the next month to try to see if we get this thing down about forty or fifty homes. The war sanitary plant, nothing new to report, which is always good, because we don't get any surprises with budget. Crime lab's still on hold. And then a couple of events we have coming up, the White Oak Library's got their Fall Fest on the twenty-ninth, and then Neighbors Night Out, which I won't steal the thunder from our Police Department, they're planning a nice, uh, tonight, night evening program from five to seven, I believe, here on the premises. Get into the report. Any other questions?
Yes. Did you get a response from the people purchasing the Old City Hall about the perennials that, about the building?
Yes, Ron did. They don't have any problem of removing any of the landscaping. You know, about the dale lilies too, right?
Yes, those are the perennials.
Yeah, yeah, they had no problem with us removing whatever we wanted to remove. So if you know what date you want to go out-
Well, I was waiting for a response in order to talk to the-
Okay, I'll have Ron, I'll have Ron give you an email, what he found out last week.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tony.
I have a question. For the next work session, Tony, is there a possibility of putting on the no truck signs and the solar lights that go on top?
Yes, please.
So, because we got to see about what other streets we're going to put those on.
Yeah, I'll talk, I'll, I'll talk to Mike when he gets back on Monday.
All right, okay, thank you. Okay, Public Works Department, Mike is on vacation, he will be back next Monday. Moving on to City Engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items related to the Wilcox Storm Sewer Improvement. First, first, I'm looking for a motion to award a contract to H. Linden and Sons Sewer and Water the amount of seven hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars for the Wilcox Stormwater Improvement and Street Resurfacing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderwoman Methvin, for the approval, award the contract to H. Linden and Sons Sewer and Water for the Wilcox Storm Sewer Improvement and Street Resurfacing in the amount of seven hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin.
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is, I look for a motion to approve the resolution approving an agreement for the Wilcox Storm Sewer Improvement and Street Resurfacing bind between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Christopher B. Burke for an amount of fifty thousand dollars. This is for CE inspection. As I stated in the letter, their proposal's for eighty-five, one eighty-five. I intend to do some of the inspections, so at this point, I'm just looking for an approval up to fifty thousand. If something comes up and I can't do that inspection, I will come back to you and ask for the additional fee.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderwoman Methvin, for a resolution approving an agreement for Wilcox Street's Storm Sewer Project bind between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Christopher B. Burke Limited. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution one, two, five, five.
And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions of City Engineer? All right, thanks, Ron.
No, I just want to thank Ron for the work you put in for the grant for Route sixty-six.
Well, we'll keep working on it. Tony and I had a conversation today, so.
All right, thanks again.
Okay, Community Development, we have nothing on the agenda. Moving on to the Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening I have two items on the agenda. The first item I have is a Police Services Agreement, Special Events Police Services Agreement for the Lions Club luau on September first. The hours are from seven PM to ten PM, and they're looking to hire two officers with two patrol vehicles for that event. We discussed this at our previous work session, and I'd be looking for approval for this evening.
So moved. Claudia.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderwoman Methvin, for the approval of a Special Events Police Services Contract with the Crest Hill Lions Club. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The second item I have is a, we have discussed this previously, this is a IGA with the City of Chicago. This allows our officers that are assigned to ILEUS Mobile Field Force to be part of the safety and security of the Democrat National Convention. So I, I know we had talked about it, and I'm just looking for ratification of that agreement this evening.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
However, the address listed in here for the City of Crest Hill is not the current address.
Okay.
So could we please get that corrected?
Absolutely.
Really a pet peeve of mine, I'm so sorry.
No worries.
All right, we have a motion by other person Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the ratification of a signed intergovernmental agreement for the provision of services and aid in preparation for and during, during the Democratic National Convention meeting in Chicago. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Jennifer Methvin.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't have any other items on the agenda. I would like to just update that we are still moving forward with our Neighbors Night Out on September fourth, from five to eight. We had come up with our, we're almost buttoning up our, our plan for that day. What I will be doing is sending you all an email, if you'd like to volunteer. There's some stations that we'll have that we do need volunteers for, so we would greatly appreciate that assistance. It's going to be a great event. We're going to have a bounce house, we're going to have, at one point, the helicopter's going to land. There's all kinds of touch of trucks, it's coming. A lot of volunteers that are coming out to help us. And I'm looking forward to it. It's a great event for community outreach for us.
Any questions of Police Chief?
Yeah, just to touch on a subject that we spoke about, it's really important for the resident, just for the record, that we are paying for the alert on the website about notify me. And for some reason, it's not being used. With the incident that happened a couple of days ago, we, when they shut the school down, the elderly, especially with in my area, they were very upset that they were not notified. I think not everyone's on Facebook, and even if you are on Facebook, Facebook doesn't send you, you know,
Yeah, we will definitely-
Like a quick, yeah, we need to, this is an emergency, we need to put out there, it's something that I think we're paying for, and if we are, we need to utilize it. So, Tony, can you please look into that, see if we're still paying for notify me? Because I've noticed, I don't get any of the messages anymore. I used to, I register like email, text, and phone call, and I'm not getting any of them. And also, the residents are not. It's really important to notify when there's an emergency like that, so they can lock their doors and they can be alerted, especially the elderly. So if you can utilize that, it would be a good thing. Thank you, Chief, for continuing on working with the community.
Not a problem. Thank you.
All right, Chief, how are we doing with getting the old security system out of the Old City Hall?
I know we had talked to AIS, I'm not sure. I, I will update with you. I'll update you personally on that. I will check, but I, I know some of it's obsolete, but we, I know that Mike was looking at it too, so I'll, I'll get an update for you on that.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Mayor's Report. First agenda item is the appointment of a Plan Com, Plan Commission Commissioner, Mr. Marty Flynn. He was vetted through an interview process by the mayor. He was also brought before the City Council last Monday night for a meet and greet, and to answer any questions that the City Council may have. So per the work session that we held on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, I am recommending that Mr. Marty Flynn be appointed to the Crest Hill Plan Commission to fill the term that would, to- So, per the work session that we held on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, I am recommending that Mr. Marty Flynn be appointed to the Crest Hill Plan Commission to fill the term that would, the, to fulfill the term of Jan Plateau, who retired, and there are two years left on his term that would expire on April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
So moved, just presented. Second.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Methvin, for the approval of Mr. Marty Flynn to be, uh, added to the Crest Hill Plan Commission. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Marty is here. Marty, would you like to say anything at the podium? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity, and I will do best I can.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations and welcome, welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda is a proclamation honoring Joe and Donna Marshall on their retirement after forty-five years of service to the Crest Hill Pony Baseball. So this was presented to them at a surprise ceremony they had at the ball field, and about two hundred, uh, individuals were present on August fourth. Um, so I would just ask for the reading of this proclamation, so be put into the official record. We'll begin with Alderman Dyke, but I will ask that, uh, Tina, take Mark's spot, and Joe, if, if you could, uh, take Nate's spot also, in the reading.
Now, therefore, it starts right here.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think I already had you doing that bottom part, Joe, anyway. All right, Scott.
All right, a pro, proclamation honoring Joe and Donna Marshall on their retirement after forty-five years of service to Crest Hill Pony Baseball.
Whereas Joe Marshall, over many years, has served in the capacity of President of both the DuPage River Conference and the Crest Hill Pony Baseball, head groundskeeper at the Marshals and Smith Fields, and has been a lifelong coach and mentor, who focused on the fundamentals of the game of baseball, taught the lessons of life through the lessons of sport, and instilled confidence and strength in each athlete that played for him. And?
Whereas Donna Marshall, over the years, has served in the capacity of business manager, treasurer, concession stand director, team mom, and a multitude of other roles for the past forty-five years, leading to the success of athletes in Crest Hill Pony Baseball, and...
Whereas Coach Joe Marshall, along with Business Manager Donna Marshall, have aided and guided many athletes. In their accomplishments, sportsmanship, and knowledge of baseball, and have, over the past forty-five years, gained the memories of lifelong friendship, and have helped turn young athletes into successful and professional adults. And?
Whereas, under the leadership of Joe and Donna Marshall, along with several assistant coaches and numerous volunteers, have been an integral part in the success, growth, and development of Crest Hill Pony Baseball Organization over the past forty-five years, and have improved the quality of life of many residents throughout the City of Crest Hill. And whereas, Joe and Donna Marshall will be retiring on August fourth, two thousand twenty-four, after forty-five years of service, dedication, and commitment to Crest Hill Pony Baseball and to the City of Crest Hill.
Now, therefore, I, Raymond R. Solomon, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of City of Crest Hill, do hereby proclaim August fourth, two thousand twenty-four, to be observed as Joe and Donna Marshall Day in the City of Crest Hill, and hereby congratulate Joe and Donna Marshall on their outstanding achievements, their dedication to their league, their families, and their community. Given under my hand and the corporate seal of City of Crest Hill, this nineteenth day of August, two thousand twenty-four, Raymond Solomon, Mayor of Crest Hill.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin, for the approval of proclamation honoring Joe and Donna Marshall on their retirement after forty-five years of service to the City of Crest Hill Pony Baseball. Questions or comments? Roll call.
I'm sorry, who made that motion?
I did.
Thank you. Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
And Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. And as, as the City of Crest Hill, we certainly wanna thank Joe and Donna for the years of service that they gave to Pony Baseball. They were there almost every day, doing something during the summer months, and even in the fall, with the fall baseball. Um, I think that's a record that will probably never will be broken by anyone else. I know there is a new team coming in to, uh, take over, uh, some of the duties for the boys' baseball, and we wish them good luck, uh, in the future. But again, to Joe and Donna, they dedicated two-thirds of their lifetime to the boys' baseball, so we certainly wanna thank them and show our gratitude for everything that they've done to mentor a lot of young athletes over all those years. That's all for the Mayor. If anybody has any questions, we'll move on to the Clerk's Report. Christine Verchehal.
Thank you so, thank you so much. Um, in your package, you have a, a joint community shred event with the Lockport Township Government Office in the City of Crest Hill, um, to be held on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from nine AM to twelve PM. Council, I just need your approval.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Sorry.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the joint committee shred, shred event with Lockport Township Government Office. Questions or comments?
Uh, Chris, I just wanna thank you for putting this together with him. I think this is a wonderful service to our residents. I know, um, lots of places do these, and they're always extremely busy. We do them at Newmark, and our representative and people, hey, really wanna get rid of these documents and this, so thank you kindly for doing this.
You're welcome. Um, if approved, can I, each one of you, I'll send you out a flyer that I created for, so you guys can all share it.
And I'm do, I'm working to get the day off, so I can help.
Perfect.
I changed my mind, I'm not gonna go, since you said it puts it through.
Good enough.
Roll call.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. And I just have a public service announcement. The first day to circulate petitions for the two thousand twenty-five consolidated election for the City of Crest Hill will be tomorrow, August twentieth. The seats that are up are for Mayor, Clerk, Treasurer, Alderperson Ward One. There'll be a one, two-year term, and a one, four-year term. Alderperson Ward Two, one, four-year term. Alderperson Ward Three, one, four-year term. And Alderperson Ward Four, one, four-year term. Um, the packet can be picked up in the Clerk's office, starting tomorrow, and then every Monday through Friday, from eight, eight AM to four-thirty PM. Any questions? Thank you. That's all I have to report.
All right, thanks, Chris. All right, moving on to our City Treasurer's Report. Glenn Conklin, good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First order of business is I seek your approval on a resolution designating Dave Strahl as the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Authorized Agent for the City of Crest Hill.
So moved, just presented.
Second. We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for a resolution date, res, a resolution designating David Strahl as the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund IMRF Authorized Agent for the City of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution one-two-five-six.
Thank you very much. Next, I seek your approval for the appointment of an interim finance, finance director, Erica Wagner.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderwoman Methvin, for the appoint.
So, the, the Mayor's making the appointment?
Oh, excuse me, yes.
Okay.
Right with you. Yes.
Okay.
The Mayor's making the appointment.
All right.
For the appointment of interim finance director position. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Did we meet her?
No.
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 Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
She will be at the work session next Monday night, correct, Tony?
Yes, on the twenty-sixth, she'll be here.
You'll meet her after the vote.
Okay, so excuse me on that.
We are backwards in here.
Excuse me, um, that was the appointment portion of it. This next is, uh, I seek approval for a resolution approving the appointment of Erica Wagner as interim finance director, and approving an employee leasing agreement buying between the City of Crest Hill and GovTemp USA LLC for Erica Wagner's services as interim finance director.
So moved, as presented.
Second. Motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for a resolution approving the appointment of Erica Wagner as interim finance director, and approving an employee leasing agreement buying between the City of Crest Hill and GovTemp's USA LLC for Erica Wagner's services as interim finance director. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution one-two-five-seven.
Thank you very much. Next is, uh, seeking approval for the recruitment proposal in your packet from GovHR USA for the finance director position. This is for the search for the, uh, for a permanent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderwoman Methvin, for the approval of a recruitment proposal from GovHR USA for a full-time finance director position. Questions or comments? Roll call, please, Chris.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Next is, uh, I seek approval of our list of bills issued through August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of five hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-five cents.
So moved, just presented. Second.
Motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Methvin, for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Next is just reporting our regular and overtime payroll from July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, through August eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of two hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. That's all I have for this evening, unless anyone has any questions.
Any treasure, any questions of the Treasurer?
No, I just have a, a comment. I, I know this is not for, for the Treasurer, but we just voted it on to start the process for, um, a finance, um, director, which we should. Um, we have six interim positions, and once again, we voted no for City Mistraider. Um, it is a shame. So I hope we can track back and start filling all these positions. That's all.
All right, thanks, Glenn. Uh, unfinished business, we have nothing. Anybody? New business?
I have a comment on new business. Um, several weeks ago, I emailed you, Tony, about, um, bringing forth, uh, some ideas about creating committees for the City Council, and about, uh, having a discussion about diversity hiring by the City of Crest Hill, and I haven't heard any response, or I haven't seen it, it hasn't made the list or anything on any agenda of the work session or meeting, and I'd like to know why, because I, I think this is a practice in good governance, and if we're gonna practice good governance in this city, it has to start right here at City Council. Now, I would like a response.
Uh, give you a response in regards to the committee, or committee levels, that's a discussion that we should have at a full City Council. So for me to bring any suggestions, um, I'm, I could see what other City Councils are doing, but you have, you have a long history of having committee of the whole at work sessions, and not having individual committees. I've heard that at numerous times in, in meetings. You'd rather have a full committee review, um, any of the projects or personnel, things like that, so, um, I, I could definitely look at some other communities and see what else they're doing, but I think, um, right now, unless the rest of the Council, you know, we wanna put on a work session, I'll put on a work session to discuss creating committees, and we go from there. Another reason why there hasn't been much activity on it is, um, our HR was out, out of office for about nine days, I think it was, with, um, on leave, is the best way to put it. Um, been kinda busy with, uh, no finance director, I've been working both, both jobs, I've got three jobs for the last couple of weeks. Um, in regards to the diversity, uh, Dave Strahl and I have talked about that, we have a lot of that language in our personnel manual, and which, which is on the next agenda, so we can look at that language and see if that needs to be updated or not in regards to inclusion, diversity. Uh, but we, we're, we're probably at the right level. Uh, there could be some new, there are some new, uh, policies that some communities are looking at, and we could discuss that when we're updating the employee manual, so.
Okay, I mean, but i- in order to have a discussion about any of this, it needs to be put on the work session agenda. work session agenda, because to me, and this is my opinion, people can differ, the current system don't work. It hasn't worked. I mean, there may be some people here that's comfortable with the lack of it working, but I'm not one of them. So I would like to get it out there, and if the rest of the council voted down, then at least it'd be voted down. I can live with that.
We could definitely work with that with Mary O'Connor and the internal controls, with the consulting that you just engaged with her services, with Skiditch. She did talk about that, and we probably need to take a close look at your internal controls, which would include recruitment, hiring practices, evaluations, the organizational structure. So there'll be opportunities with her assessment, we'll probably come back with some recommendations that we should look at. We're not, nobody's sitting back saying, this is the way it should run. No, a city should not run at interims. That's definitely, especially as professionals that you've been hiring as interims, we don't agree with it either. But, you know, you got to recruit, you got to find qualified candidates that, you know, we bring forth to the council. So I think it was very good to bring in a third party like Mary O'Connor to come in and look at our internal controls and see what is the maybe linchpin that is causing possibly not getting your, you know, the recruitments and not finding the appropriate candidates that is acceptable for this community. And you as representatives have interviewed many people since I've been here for the last six months. I bet you it's been over, I would say close to fifteen to twenty candidates in different positions. So we need to do better, I'll tell you about it. So I don't have an update for Mary O'Connor yet in regards to what other documents she needed, but I'll email her and put a little fire to say we would like to get something to the council, hopefully in the next two or three weeks of her assessment and review. At least an update.
Thank you.
Regarding the committee, he requested that six, nine months ago, to be put on the agenda. I'm just speaking about the first item that he requested about the committee.
Well, I've only been here, just coming up on six months now. Yes, he has.
But he requested that several times, and it seems his request has never been granted. You know, we've talked about that many times, about putting it on the agenda, and so we can, you know, brainstorm and see if his ideas are good ideas, and if we honor other elected official, their agenda item to be put, why not his, you know?
Well, I would think we'd want to have some type of documents of what Darrell's looking for, at least a framework in regards to that. So if you just want to do a brainstorming meeting, we could pick a work session and just put down brainstorming in regards to, you know, our employment practices. But I think that's what she's doing with Mary O'Connor. You hired her to do an assessment, and I think she was very clear that there's, once she could get that information, then she could provide some direction to council and staff.
I'm not speaking of them, I'm speaking about the committee. He's talking about committee, like when we hire people, when, that's what he's talking about. Can you explain?
I did.
Yeah. I'm not talking about Mary O'Connor. I think that's a good thing, and she's going to work on it.
And I think we've discussed, there's been some recommendations sometimes for a committee. And that has been talked about as part of our recruitment, of bringing in candidates. Should we have a committee look at these candidates? And comment was made, and I don't mind saying it, in an executive session, that is not what we really want to do. You want to keep it as having, you know, candidates come to the city council. So I give mixed directions, which way you really want to go. If you want to do a brainstorming, that's great, but I would think you'd want to have some substance for that brainstorming. What do you want to look at?
But I think with, the candidate would still come before the full council at the committee's recommendation. So what I looked at was some other communities that have committees in place, and the committees recommend, let's say, public works director, for example. They recommend two or three, four candidates to be interviewed by the full city council. And the full, once the city council meet those candidates, they come back to the committee with the ones they like, and the committee focus on bringing the final two or one, two, back to the city council for approval.
And I've worked the same way in many communities, they have personnel committees. This is unique here, of why there is not a personnel committee, but you've been doing it for years. So if you want to have a change, let's look at the internal controls, let's look at what is within your code, your ordinances, you know, to create those type of committees too. You know, I'll take a look at that with Mike Stiff. And the other thing is, we do have civil service here, which is one of the few communities in the metropolitan area that still has civil service. So we have that little hurdle we got to look at. How does that impact in regards to personnel committee? And I think it's a good idea. I've seen personnel committees really do have a good for the candidates, and the candidates like the idea of coming in front of a board of three people and getting down into, I'll even say, the weeds of why do they want the job, and why are they a good fit for our community? I think those type of one-on-ones with three people in the committee, you do get your candidates more comfortable, and you get to find out about them. For a recommendation for the whole council. So, and I mean, we're brainstorming here, it sounds like maybe the topic is, especially when you want to bring in, you know, Skiditch, pay them seventy-five hundred dollars, let's see what she's coming at, because the first thing she asked for was the employee manual and the organizational chart. That's where we start from. That's our foundation, that she wanted to take a good look at. So personnel committee is something that we could probably look at as part of the structure.
I mean, I'm easy to do business.
I know you are. No, I'm glad to get to that level, that is, the council want to have a personnel committee.
That's why it has to go on the agenda for a work session, and we can discuss it, not in the city council meeting.
Okay.
It will be a workshop, and we discuss, this is what the rest of the council are comfortable to look into. It's just a line item that can go, we discuss it for a few minutes, and we make a decision. I think what he's referring to is pretty much similar to like economic development, like the way Sandra Calabacan, he's requesting to have, you know, hiring committee.
Mike, do you want to add anything?
No, I was just going to say, I mean, we seem to be laser-focused on hiring and personnel. And my question to Darrell was, is that really the only committee you're looking at, or are you thinking of maybe a building and grounds committee? I mean, there are many committees in various villages and cities around the area, and usually, I can just, by experience, say, Manuka, one village board trustee is the chair of that committee, and he puts, he or she puts in a report, in this case, it's a he, he reports at the meetings what they did, if you want to get down into individual committees. I just don't know whether we're focusing solely on hiring, in which case, I think Tony's point on Sickich is actually a good one, to see what those people think, but also other committees as well.
Yeah, my focus is actually to take a look at a committee, since we have none, and expand it from there, because, like you say, other communities have these committees, and I've looked at them, and, I mean, they seem to be working rather well, at least from the minutes I've read online, but that's, I think we need to start with at least one, and we can grow from there. So I'm just, it looks like a good governance practice, and it seems to be working well in other places.
And so, like, has been discussed tonight, if it's just going to be on a work session agenda as sort of a brainstorm session, I would task all of you to do kind of what Darrell has done. Look around, see what other committees are in some of our neighbors, and see if you think that it would be good here, and then we can have a nice discussion. I mean, everybody can weigh in on, I think this committee's a good one, I think that committee's a good one. So, homework assignment.
And it's probably a good discussion to have before you go to IML, because then you're going to be networking there, and you're going to be in different work sessions and seeing what's going on. We could all learn from that, too.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, committee liaison reports.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
We had a gentleman that came before us at a work session about a tap-on fee, and it has yet to make the agenda. I'm just curious, what's the status?
Tap-on fees, Ron has been looking at codifying our fees and then also justifying, like the sort of-
No, this was a waiver that we all agreed on that night, and-
Right.
It's yet to make the agenda. I'm just asking why it hasn't been on the agendas.
We haven't prepared a response yet. Our recommendation.
Well, we took a straw vote that night.
Correct.
And we were all in favor of giving that to him like we did the other one, so I'm confused as to-
Oh, the one you requested in there? Why isn't it on an agenda? That was for-
Cora Street.
Nineteen sixteen Cora Street.
Right. That should be, whatever's holding it up, it's got to be something within the documents. I haven't heard.
I believe what I was told by economic development, correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, that there were some issues with that property, and that he would have to, he would have to work through the Economic Community Development Department for, to go through plan commission recommendations on his request.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was a different one, on Cora. Yes.
Well, the resident's the one that's inquiring, so obviously, he's not aware of any decisions made, because he's asking.
We have run in some legal questions in regards to his request, I can tell you that, with where the buffalo box is located, and the lots, you know, in regards to the split lots, is one, is definitely going to be a non-legal conforming lot. So what are we waiving in regards to a building that cannot be built? So that question has to get answered before we bring something back to you, say, we should waive this fee. Wouldn't even know if that lot could be a buildable lot for him to be able to tap on to that buffalo box. So there's more behind the scenes in regards to this, in regards to his request, if we're looking at legally to come back with a recommendation that this is a legal request, because it's going to be a legal lot or not in regards to it. It isn't as simple as the other one, where the buffalo box-
Has this been conveyed to the resident?
Pardon me?
All you're saying been conveyed to the resident?
I don't know if it's been, if all of it's been conveyed, but I know some, there've been some meetings out there in regards to the structure where it's located and how he's going to connect. So I'll find out, but see if we can get some answers.
Committee liaison reports, anybody? City council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We'll begin with Alderman Kubal tonight.
Nothing to add tonight, mayor.
Alderperson Oberlin?
Nothing.
Alderwoman Gazal?
So I want to wish all the students a blessed and success year, and please, for the drivers, when you see a bus, stop. There's a lot of kids are crossing the streets right now.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Alderwoman Methvin?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Dyke?
Just like to echo what Claudia brought up, that the kids are back in school, so keep your eyes open, be careful when you drive, slow down. Children are back in school now, so let's keep them safe.
Public comment. Anybody like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our city attorney, Mike, is there a need for an executive session?
Yes, there is, under five ILCS one-twenty-two C eleven litigation.
So moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for an executive session for two C eleven. Questions or comments? Roll call, Chris.
Jennifer Methvin?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll be going into executive session at seven fifty, two p.m.